Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of October 12th, 2022. First thing on our agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. And I have a couple of things that will need to be taken off of the agenda. One is the approval of minutes that we'll put off until next time. And the other is the executive session, which we will not need tonight. Are there any other changes or deletions to the agenda? Anyone? Okay, then we will move forward then. So next on our agenda is superintendent's update. And I welcome Assistant Superintendent Garth McKinney to take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. A couple of updates for the committee and attendees. First, all the principals agreed that our Milton High School Community Service Day was a great success. Our high school students helped out in classrooms, provided individual and personalized experiences at lunch or recess, packed STEM bags, and distributed curriculum materials with thank you to our high school students. We also had a great day of SAT and PSAT testing. More than half of our seniors participated in taking SATs, while our sophomores and juniors took the PSATs. We want to say thank you to the Copeland Family Foundation for allowing all of our 10th and 11th graders to participate in this exam at no charge. In addition to the High School Community Service Day, freshmen also had an opportunity to participate in Digital Citizenship Day, which reinforced reinforced the importance of appropriate behavior when using social media. Lastly, some important dates that are included in school calendars and the superintendent's blog. On October 19th, there is a seasonal flu clinic at Pierce Middle School. October 28th is our next late start day for students. That morning will be professional development for teachers. So please make sure you can mark your calendars. On October 30th, the Milton Foundation for Education is holding the annual Monster Dash at Cunningham Park. November 1st, there's no school for students. That's a PD day for teachers. Second to last, don't forget, tickets are on sale for the High School Presentation of Beauty on the Beast on November 10, 12, and 13. And lastly, but sincerely, October is National Principals Month. I hope you all take a moment to recognize the Grade Six principals that we have, helping our students, teachers, and families across the district. That's the end of my report. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. The next thing on our agenda is a discussion and vote on interim assistant superintendent. And I'd like to just say a few words about about what that's about. First, I'd like to, on behalf of the Milton School Committee, congratulate our Amy Dexter and wish her very well in her new role as the Director of Finance for the Town of Milton. As you may know, Ms. Dexter joined Milton Public Schools in December 2020 as the Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs, after having had a very successful career serving as the town accountant for Milton. Since joining Milton Public Schools in 2020, Ms. Dexter has played an integral role on our central office team. She has was recognized by both school and town officials for her detailed and transparent work throughout the budgetary process and has been credited for assisting the district and the town through the COVID-19 pandemic by working on federal grants provided through ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, and ESER, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. And Ms. Dexter's experience in this area has been invaluable to the town and the schools. Amy, we thank you for everything you have done. The school committee looks forward to continuing our partnership with you in your new role with the town. And we sent you a little something to thank you, and that we hope you will enjoy. So thank you. Thank you so much. And then we are also voting tonight to appoint an interim assistant superintendent for business. And that person is Dr. Glenn Pavlichek, who has graciously agreed to return to this position. For those who may not know him, Dr. Pavlichek has served as the Assistant Superintendent for Business for several years before retiring in December 2020, before Ms. Dexter arrived. He is a respected member of the Milton community and is well-known for his work in numerous town and school committees throughout his career. Perhaps most notably, Dr. Pavlichek has served as Chair of Milton's Warrant Committee and as Chair of the Milton School Committee for several years. On behalf of the Milton School Committee, we want to express our gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Pavlichek for coming back, stepping back into this role as interim assistant superintendent for Business Affairs. And we look forward to welcoming welcoming him back next week. So I'd like to make a motion on that regard to approve the appointment of Dr. Glenn Pavlichek as Assistant Superintendent for Business. You have a second, please?
Second.
My second.
Thank you. And we'll do a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maren, yes, that is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you. We'll look forward to welcoming Dr. Pavlichek back. Let's just see the agenda. Now, we also have Strategic Metrics Team on that. Dr. McKinney, do you have something you'd like to share on that one?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we also have-
Excuse me, if I couldn't, if I could just interrupt for one second. I just saw Ms. Dexter's hand raised. I'm sorry, I missed it before now.
It's okay. I just wanted to thank the school committee and all of the Milton Public School staff for the support over the last two years. The opportunity to work at the Milton Public Schools has been a great opportunity for me. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting me that in that role. And I look forward to continuing the work of the town and the schools as we move forward. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We do have the Pierce Middle School Site Council presentation. Would it be acceptable that they present? And I'm happy to provide a metrics team update after that.
Absolutely. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Fish, turn it over to you and your team. Is there anybody else from your team that we need to to promote to be part of the presentation?
No, we have everybody. Aaron Power, Adina Schecter, Megan Crowley, and Joe Clark. We are all set.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. Thank you for the opportunity to for our Site Council to present on behalf, not just of the council, but on behalf of of Pierce and to provide you with some updates on our work relative to our school improvement plan and some other initiatives this year. I am going to share my screen, if that's okay. Are you able to see that? Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Well, again, I always look forward to having the opportunity to present to the committee and to the community of ours regarding the work, all the good work that we have going on within our school and in our school community. I'd like to begin tonight by recognizing the members of Pierce Site Council. We have been very fortunate to have a high level of engagement among our parents and guardians as well as the staff. So Lexi Bergeron's parent, Brendan Bond, teacher, Joe Clark, parent, Rosara Cruz, parent, Latifah Frank, parent, Melissa Hartren, teach special education teacher, Dr. Patricia Jolitz Lloyd, parent, Dr. Regina Jean Charles, parent, Fred McFadden, parent, Renee Bennoz, a math teacher, Jake Smith, social studies teacher, Stacey Solomon, parent, Dana Turner, parent, and Candace Bredmore, parent. So we have really enjoyed not just a tremendous amount of engagement with our families and staff on Site Council over the past couple of years, but we've really benefited from having a solid core group that has welcomed, been fortunate to welcome a number of new members. I want to compliment and thank the Site Council for their their commitment to this work. While it is early in the year, we're really just getting up and going with our with our focus areas and steering our school along through our school improvement plan and improvement processes. They've already very been engaged quite a bit throughout the fall, and I'm grateful for that. Further, we're incredibly lucky to have such wealth and diversity of experiences and perspectives in our members. And I have to say, in all my years of being a principal, over the past few years, I've never seen such an engaged and active Site Council. Well, we're here tonight really for everything that we will discuss relative to school improvement. The most important thing here is our students. So my my hope for here is it's nice. It was nice to be able to have some new pictures to add to to our slide deck this year, which included full faces of students and most importantly, students who are engaged and happy in really having a successful transition back to school. So I hope that these photos here give a glimpse into life here at Pierce. And at Pierce Middle School, we are nearly 1,000 fun, enthusiastic, and unique young people who are amid an exciting and ever-changing time in our development. And as a school community, we recognize and celebrate this time of booming physical, cognitive, and social-emotional growth and development. Physically, no, we know that this is an interesting and tricky time of development for our kids. And as a community, we are committed to fostering an environment that understands values and empathizes with the many changes that our students are experiencing. At this time in their development, students' reasoning and critical thinking capacities are developing at an extraordinary rate. And middle school really presents a unique opportunity to develop students' confidence and identities, both as learners and as thinkers. Finally, socially and emotionally, this is a time of developing self-awareness and awareness of others, and a time of learning to navigate social and interpersonal dynamics, learn to build relationships, and developing emotional resilience. As a whole school community, from our students to our educators to our families, we've all done a phenomenal job managing all the challenges in the past few years. But to offer a special acknowledgement to our faculty and staff, we've been nothing short of amazing. We've been through a lot in the past few years, but are proud of how our faculty has consistently responded, always with our students' development, learning, and well-being at the center of their work. So as we move into the presentation, I wanted to take the opportunity to recap some early successes in the school year. We have really, by many measures, had an outstanding start to the new school year. It has been nice to say that it has felt normal for the first time in quite some time in our schools. To give the committee some insight, we really should make some some positive changes to how we we open the year. We began the first few days of school with with some special schedules that focused on building community and connections, teachers and students getting to know each other and setting both school-wide and classroom expectations. And the feedback on the first month plus of the school year has been overwhelmingly positive from our students, from our staff, and from our families. And we look forward to building on the momentum throughout the year. We also want to highlight here, you'll hear more about these, both of these later in our presentation, two notable successes. And the first has been the rollout of our new Grade Six seminar class. The seminar class is a new course for all of our sixth graders that are all engaged in this year. And again, feedback from students and families around the new seminar class has been fantastic. We look forward to sharing more with the committee about the seminar class a little bit further along in the presentation. Another notable success has been our Late Start Day in the staff professional development. The new year marks a renewed commitment to authentic professional development. Well, much of the past few years has been focused on problem-solving, making adjustments, and responding to challenges related to the pandemic and otherwise. With this new professional development resource that we've been gifted by way of the Late Start Days, we're able to engage educators in high-quality professional learning experiences. And through the support of Superintendent Sheen and Dr. McKinney, we kicked off the new year with an exemplary professional development session on universal design for learning, which set a strong foundation for our work toward realizing the district's strategic initiatives of personalized learning, safe and supportive schools, and equity in education. And the committee will hear more about our work on UDL later in the presentation. So now we'll take a look at our school profile. When you zoom out and look at our school holistically, you see a story of enrollment growth. And we will continue to circle back to this throughout throughout our presentation. But for the new school year, this school year, we are now at 950 students. You'll notice the breakdown by grade, 366 students in sixth grade, tell by 287 in seventh grade and 305 in eighth grade. And what we also shared here is just it's just a little bit of comparison. You'll notice that we are up about 30 students overall from the 2021, 2020 school year. And based on straight-line projections of the current fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, we anticipate being up over 1,000 students for next school year with 370, 366, and 287 students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade respectively. Our current and projected enrollments are going to have to be a substantive part of how we educate our community on our needs in the near future. And while the reality of a new school building project will eventually alleviate space issues throughout the district, the reality is that enrollment is outpacing how we've added staffing. And again, we'll circle back to this throughout the presentation. So now we'll shift our focus to bring the committee up to speed on some of the school improvement efforts and initiatives that we've been engaged in throughout the 2022, 2023 school year. Our school improvement efforts continue to be grounded in three tenets or underpinnings. And those are academic achievement, social-emotional learning and behavioral health, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. We view these tenets as working together to drive a focus on students and their development as learners and as people. These tenets are interdependent. We have to view social-emotional learning, behavioral health, and diversity, equity, and inclusion as the foundation of our values and ultimately excellence in education. It's important to note that these underpinnings are aligned with the vision of excellence and equity that our district has constructed, which is reflected in the strategic plan that was recently authored. So our Site Council created a new school improvement plan last school year that will guide our priorities over this three-year period. Each of these priority areas is aligned with the three underpinnings of academic achievement, SEL, and behavioral health, as well as diversity, equity, and inclusion. And our school improvement plan has four what we call priority areas. The first is school culture, student support, and engagement. The second is teaching and learning. The third, data culture. And fourth, facilities, staffing, and enrollment. In throughout the presentation, we'll share with the committee some key actions embedded within those priority priority areas that make up our three-year school improvement plan. So we'll begin by highlighting the priority area of school culture, student support, and engagement. So in the school improvement plan's priority area of school culture, student support, and engagement, we have a goal to explicitly develop a strong school culture that is anchored in the core values of safety, responsibility, respect, and kindness. It is characterized by strong relationships, a sense of community, student wellness, and student sense of belonging. Related to that goal, we have a theory of action that says if our school's culture promotes inclusivity, respect, and achievement, then students and educators will be able to excel and thrive. The two illustrative examples of our work toward actualizing this goal are the implementation of the sixth-grade seminar class and our work towards disrupting trends and disproportionate discipline outcomes for students. We'll take a look now, spend some time looking at the sixth-grade seminar class. To provide a little background, a little bit of history, two years ago, the Pierce Instructional Leadership Team engaged in discussions around strategies for supporting students' transition from elementary school to middle school. These deliberations were aligned with the related school improvement efforts at the time. Simultaneously, we found ourselves working with students and families around the transition to middle school, and in particular, some of the challenges that came with the blending of four unique elementary school communities once they arrived, when students arrived at Pierce. We decided to replace the sixth-grade exploratory writing class that made sixth graders previously with a seminar class. This was a multi-pronged strategy as this shift we viewed as being would better meet students' needs in a creative and authentic way. So at this time, I would like to introduce Erin Power and Megan Crowley, two of our teachers of the seminar class, to speak about their experiences with the class. Erin and Megan, thank you very much for being here.
Oh, do you want me to go first, Megan? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay. So I'm Erin Power. I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I will just say, this seminar class was a real leap of faith in Bill Fish. And it definitely, I think, has paid off. I really do think it has been so beneficial. It has been a much calmer start, definitely in sixth grade, particularly with the large class size that we have. So we really, I kind of told the students, maybe as corny as it sounds, like you go through your day in middle school, you learn math, you learn science, social studies, and this class is really about learning about you, about as a learner, metacognition, thinking about your own thinking, setting goals. And I just think that the more mindful, and I have to say selfishly as a teacher, I think I've been so reflective this year because I'm practicing what I preach in the classroom, which has, you know, I'm pretty reflective anyway, but I think even outside in my own life about about how much time I'm spending online. Or like I kind of now look, I shut my phone off more than I ever have. And the students say that, like, just the doing the breathing, like a student told me she really struggles getting up in the morning and coming to school because she can't sleep at night, but she's been practicing the breathing that we do. And she's sleeping so much better. So little, just little, I think, the more mindful that we are, those just sort of little victories, I think, have just been, it's really been, I don't want to say better than I thought it was, but kind of better than I thought it was going to be. And so we're doing books on bullying. It's just a really, it's just a really kind of relaxing, mindful class. I don't, I don't know if I'm expressing it that well, but no, it's been, it's just been a really positive. Mindful class. I don't, I don't know if I'm expressing it that well, but no, it's been, it's just been a really positive, I think, addition to sixth grade. Megan, do you want to?
Yeah, I can, I can really just echo everything that Erin has just said, that the students have really taken well to this class. And I've even had a student like walking to my class say, oh, good, it's seminar, this class is so relaxing. When like the rest of the day is so full of like, you know, different types of homeworks and projects and tests. And our class is really helping them, you know, deal with all of that. And then also in a, you know, with mindfulness in hand, and I'll even say, well, like Erin said, you know, practicing what we preach. Like I give them me as an example all the time that like even when we introduced mindfulness to them, that like I was like, just the other day, I sat there and I had twenty million different things in my head and I had to take a step back and be mindful of what I was doing. And they really liked that. I've had a lot of great discussions with the kids about what their days are like, what's causing them stresses. It's been a great way to really get to know them. We've been able to have one-on-one conferences with them already this year, just to really get to know what their interests are, what they're doing after school, but also just kind of like check in with them. You know, what classes are they doing well in? What classes do they need help with? What can we as teachers help them with this year? And I think the students have really, really taken to it. And I'm excited to see what else we're able to provide for them this year and excited to talk about. Do the common book read, which really highlights the bullying and what sort of discussions we're able to draw from that. Because so far I've had some great discussions on like unplugging and digital digital drama so far. So I'm excited to see what other discussions we can have.
And we don't meet every day, we meet every other day. So in a seven-day cycle, it would be three days.
Yes.
Megan, thank you for for sharing those insights. I'd like to introduce now Jill Clark. Jill is a member of our site council and a parent of a sixth grader, just to share some perspective through the lines of a sixth grade parent.
Thanks, Dr. Fish, and thanks for having me tonight. Again, my name is Jill Clark and I'm the parent of a sixth grader at Pierce. And talking both with my sixth grader and some other sixth graders, hearing a lot of similar things to what the teachers shared. I think having that space to have a little bit of a pause in a day that can otherwise be, you know, not only very fast-paced and chaotic, but very different from the elementary school experience. I think kids, as they're making that transition, having a place to pause a little bit and take a little moment in their day is is really helpful for a lot of kids. Definitely hearing good things about some of the mindfulness and meditation opportunities, but also the flexibility. I think that a lot of kids have have seen with that, that, you know, if the deep breathing isn't working for them, then they can, you know, sit quietly or, you know, read or draw. Or, you know, just kind of find ways to achieve that mindfulness in ways that are that are working for them. I've also heard from my students that some of the more concrete study skills have been helpful and sort of, you know, thinking about how to approach school. And, you know, as the homework gets more intense and there's a number of classes. Being able to build some specific skills around how to manage that. And my student seminar teacher, which is not one of the two teachers that we have here, shared with us at Open House that she most recently taught these, this type of class and students at a community college level. And so as a parent, the idea that my kid is getting these skills way, way earlier, you know, really when they have the opportunity to sink in and and benefit her throughout her educational career, I think is an incredible opportunity and something that I was really impressed by.
Jill, Erin, Megan, thank you very much for for being here and for sharing your perspectives. We are going to transition the the presentation away from the seminar class. Now, I'm not sure Chair Rosemary, if it would be appropriate, I don't know if anybody, the committee has any questions or comments while while Jill and Megan and Erin are here. I don't want to take anything out of order.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions? I see Dr. Miranda.
Yes, so thank you to everyone for the presentation and the information. I'm intrigued by the sixth grade seminar and just wondering in terms of what kind of training or support, you know, teachers have received to be able to implement sort of the content, teach the content. And then wondering what strategies, if any, are being applied to make sure that the learning from these seminars get transferred into the other classroom experiences, right? So how do you take that beyond just the the break that the students are getting during the seminars so that the skills are being reinforced throughout the day?
Good question. I can, I can begin, I can answer the first part and then I'll turn it, I can turn it over to Erin and Megan. Unfortunately, though, we did not have a lot of too many opportunities for training ahead of time. However, we've been able to set up comment planning time during throughout our master schedule for Erin and Megan and Kelly Gentili, who is the third staff member who teaches the seminar class. So they have common planning time built into the day, which I imagine they would say has been beneficial. And a structure of some of the flexible scheduling, we've been able to do with the creativity around our master schedule. One of to the the second part, I'm sure that Erin and Megan would put more put more detail on it. But one of the goals in collaboration is for the seminar teachers to work with the sixth grade team teachers. So as the as the team teachers are, whether they're noticing patterns or trends among their students or gaps in executive functioning or social or or planning skills, that they can work collaboratively with the on-team teachers to do those in, you know, in the moment adjustments to create content to address those needs.
I'll just add to that if you want. Sorry, Erin, if you want to go first, you can.
No, you can go ahead.
I was just gonna say the, like, in the moment kind of changing, I know I've already done at one point because there was, I usually start off class with, how are you guys doing? And there was one day where a student just raised her hand and said, I have four quizzes on Friday and I don't know what to do. And so in that moment, it was like, all right, we're gonna push aside whatever I was doing and we'll just do that tomorrow. And today we're going to talk about time management, prioritizing what we need to study and making sure that it makes its way to the classroom. And even with those one-on-one check-ins, you know, we did take a peek at their grades and we talked about, you know, some of the students are already really great at advocating for themselves and already saw like, I'm missing that assignment, but I know that I'm gonna do it now. Some of the kids needed more help with advocating for themselves. So it's kind of talking them through, it'll be like, maybe just double check with your teacher, can you retake this quiz if you didn't do well on it? If you're missing this assignment, double check with your teacher, can you do this? And then just rechecking with them, have you talked to their, have you talked to your teacher, making sure it's a little bit on them first so that they can gain these skills? Before we double check and if we need any more kind of of us in that situation. But go ahead, Erin, if you want to add anything.
Pretty much do the same thing. And so you kind of have to pivot a lot. And when doing the one-on-one meetings, I have a student saying that was not doing well in most of the classes. And it was majority of it was homework. And he was uncomfortable reaching out to the teachers, so I did do it for him. And then we kind of met at their planning times with the students, kind of make the plan for him. So that's sort of how we're, we're, I mean, we're close with the sixth grade teachers too. And we can see on the portal what team they're on, what class they're in, what, we can see their grades. So it's pretty easy to reach out and connect with them.
Thank you. Member Russ Denny.
First, I want to commend the members of the site council and the staff because I remember being on the site council and hearing concerns about how prepared our sixth graders are to engage. And this is such a thoughtful solution that also addresses the issue of building a culture in a school of a thousand students. It's something that, you know, private schools are able to do because they're resourced and they're small. So I want to say thank you. And I do have a couple of follow-up questions, just because I want to understand a little more about the program. In terms of the topics that you had listed as being, what will be addressed in the class? How did you come up with that list? And is there an opportunity for the seventh and eighth graders? Or are there any plans for them to have a similar experience? Because they did not get this in sixth grade, but they would definitely benefit from many of these topics. But also just the the culture building that this allows. And I I hate to do the third question, but the question is, how would we know? I know that you talked about the students or you experienced the students differently. How do you know it's working for them? And if it is literally, you can see a difference in how they function in class, that's, that's perfectly fine.
I remember Russ and I appreciate your comment on about it being a thoughtful solution because you were on the Pierce Site Council when we were navigating some of these challenges three years ago. What was interesting is when we were, well, well, Erin, as she mentioned, teaches seventh and eighth grade ELA and Megan teaches Latin. And she also runs Pierce Academy for sixth grade. Kelly Gentili, who's the third teacher, was hired for, in the majority for assignment is is teaching the seminar class. And when we were doing that recruitment, any of the candidates with whom we spoke were blown away that this was even an an opportunity for middle school students and that, you know, that other schools aren't offering this and whether they were people who were parents who wished that their own children had something like this. It just, they were, there was a lot of excitement that a school would be thinking so creatively and flexibly about how to solve basically a problem that has that persists pretty consistently in that transition. In terms of opportunities for seventh, for seventh and eighth. I shouldn't, I shouldn't back up. The content, so like those topics that we laid out, sort of loosely calling it curriculum, really came from, you know, our instructional leadership teams, you know, collection of feedback from from sixth and sixth grade teachers. And what they were seeing over time as as challenges that students were commonly encountering. And that the list grew and evolved as we, as we talked more concretely about the course. But that's really, it was pretty much a grassroots, you know, leadership team collecting feedback from teachers, particularly sixth grade teachers, which which is where the the core concepts and themes and even right down to common book reads. That was Aaron Powers' idea, where she, you know, knowing that she, having taught sixth grade, having taught the exploratory IS, IS ELA in seventh and eighth grade has had, you know, brought the idea of doing that common book read of restart, which all sixth graders will will read. So it's, I believe, you know, I think we we view the content as really being iterative and flexible. But how that can then transition to seventh and eighth grade is a good question. Because right now, we, the the reality of it is we don't have enough staff right now to be able to do that. We had to do, we had to be pretty creative with our, with the existing staff that we had to be able to to put all sixth graders into this class for every other day. But I agree with you that that seventh and eighth graders have missed a lot of the foundational, explicit teaching of a lot of these foundational skills over the course of the past couple of years in particular. So I don't have a sharp answer for your question, but I think I think about them in the same way that you do. And how do we know it's working? I think that similar to how we did things with like the welcome to middle school camp, just survey, I think, surveying students and collecting, collecting student feedback. Formative feedback even to to get insights on how it's working for them and also where where might there be gaps? Like how how might we be able to continue to augment the the class to best meet what students need in, you know, in those moments?
Thank you. Dr. Carol.
Thank you so much. I know you have a lot more to share with us, so I'll I'll be quick. I just, I do want to echo the appreciation for this innovation that you've created and presented here. I agree, it sounds really great. And, you know, I'm I'm eager to see sort of how this benefits students, not just right now in real time, which is of course so important, but also how we can track sort of progress over the next couple of years from this class, having had this experience. So it sounds really great. And Dr. Fish, you just answered, one of my questions was to learn more about kind of how you developed this curriculum, which you answered. And I'm so pleased to hear that you did that through having collected that feedback so that you're able to target the actual needs that are there, and that's, that's terrific. My my only other question is, is that you had mentioned this was coming into a slot that was previously focused on writing? And can you just speak to sort of where else the students will continue to access the the skills in writing? I completely understand and appreciate that this foundation of fundamental skills is like important to create first as they transition into Pierce. So you you made a very persuasive case on that and it just makes sense. But are they gonna be getting those writing supports sort of later in the year or some other time?
Yep, good question, Dr. Carol. So the writing, explored, sixth grade exploratory writing class was one that many or most, I'd say many sixth graders took as one of their explorators alongside, you know, STEM or acting or art. Half-year, it was a half-years, of course, that again, most, most students took, but not all. One of the reasons why we felt comfortable with moving away from that was that we learned during the ELA curriculum review that we did in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year with Dr. Noni Lasso from Harvard, that the exploratory writing class wasn't entirely aligned with the ELA curriculum. And that the writing standards and skills that would be writing standards and skills were going to be addressed through our recently implemented ELA curriculum through Amplify. So the writing, the writing standards are being addressed and those skills are being developed within the tier-one ELA curriculum that all students are getting in sixth, seventh and eighth grade.
That's great. Thank you.
Member Russ Denny, did you have another question or you just have your hand up still? So. Member of our gaze.
So I am just, I'm actually experiencing the seminar class with my sixth grader right now, and I have to say it is amazing. And I love that you guys meet every other day because I think that reinforcement, sometimes, you know, with classes, if you if you meet once a week and then they kind of forget of like that, those check-ins that you mentioned and following, you know, and having, giving the kids the opportunity to come and speak and ask questions and just create that calm and relaxed environment for them to like, kind of come to you with their, you know, problems that they're having or their struggles is really a game changer. So thank you so much. I am very excited about this and I'm glad to be able to experience it firsthand. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Fish?
I appreciate that. And Erin and Megan and Jill, thank you so much for for joining us tonight and and for sharing a view into the seminar class from 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 both the educator perspective and the parent perspective. Appreciate that. The next aspect of our school improvement goal around school culture, student support and engagement. We have an action step to disrupt trends and disproportionate discipline outcomes through the use of restorative practices that support students and staff to learn to resolve disagreements, take ownership for their behavior and engage in acts of empathy and forgiveness. So what I'd like to do now is introduce Adina Schacter, the district's restorative justice coach and a Pierce parent to share some of insights into this key action step in our school improvement plan. Adina.
Hi, everyone. It's so great to be here. I came on board as the restorative justice coach for the district last January and really hit the ground running at Pierce. Pierce is where I spend most of my time. And I really have been welcomed there. I collaborate with not only Dr. Fish and the other assistant principals, but also with the guidance counselors, adjustment counselors and the staff. And my position is grant-funded through the Department of Education. Between the years of two thousand seventeen and then up until two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, the the department tracked districts and the number of students who are suspended in specific subgroups. And so through the the years of two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, and I know this, this data has been presented to the school committee before. What was identified is that students who identify as Black or African-American are three to four times more likely in our district to be suspended from school. In addition, another subgroup at risk of suspension is students on IEPs, specifically students who have a communication disability. And so the grant funds my position. And it is an approach to working with teachers and staff and counselors both proactively to build a community of inclusivity and belonging, which is outlined in the school improvement plan. But it's also using restorative justice practices. But it's also using restorative justice practices as a way to respond to harm when it comes up in a community or when kids make mistakes. And so there's a very detailed action plan for my work at Pierce and at the high school. I mostly work in secondary because that's where this issue is most prevalent, but I also do work in elementary schools. Because I want, as, I want schools in our district to get used to the language around restorative practices. So then when things come up, we can all have a common language which to address them. So part of the work I'm doing and what's, well, actually, just to back up, what's really powerful is now that we have a director of DEI, Claire Galloway Jones. She came on board at the end of last year and so she and I now are collaborating because restorative justice is part of the district's overall equity pillar and goals. And so it's been really great to have someone to be, feel like I'm part of the team and working with her. We just presented yesterday at the peer staff meeting and we're going to be leading grade level team meetings in the neck, within the next week to follow up on looking at some of our, of the school data specifically and thinking about how we can shift to become a more restorative school. So what, in, in the action plan, my work is to lead professional development. So I do, I'm very grateful that Dr. Fish has given me a chance to now take some of the staff meeting time, just so I can allow for some big picture kind of goals and language and vision and data sharing. And then I have to say that probably the best PD that I've been able to do is just being in the schools with teachers and coaching them one-on-one when students, when conflicts come up with students. And I'm there, I can really help navigate the situation in a proactive way, which really does prevent a punitive response, I think, the majority of the time. And then I also offered an after-school professional development series last year that I will offer again and start, it'll start in November this year. It's restorative justice sort of 101, focusing on how to lead proactive restorative justice circles, but also have a more restorative mindset when interacting with kids in the moment when struggles come up in your classroom. I started as a high school English teacher in 2005, so I, I think my experience as a teacher and an instructional coach has been helpful in this role, just to work with kids, work with staff on anything from classroom management in the moment issues to things that come up outside of school and now we need to like really figure out a restorative approach. So I had, so there are a few different, also I will be doing some co-led PD with Claire Galloway Jones for the school down the road. We're going to meet with the instructional leadership team and talk a little bit about culturally relevant teaching practices and that intersection between that work and restorative justice. That's really important to see this connection and sort of the larger work we do with teachers on becoming more culturally competent practitioners. And then lastly on the slide, student circle. So I do work with students directly and I lead circles at Pierce, restorative justice circles twice a week. It, just a quick, if you have, if you don't know what the restorative justice circle process looks like, the proactive circles I lead are really bringing students who are at risk of being removed because they have been historically this year, last year, or clearly are exhibiting signs that they're in a stressed state at school and they just need more support. So I, I, I run proactive circles with those students so I can build a relationship with them, get to know them, that they understand the process. And then if something comes up, we use the circle to repair harm and make things right in the community. And so I would say I lead, you know, at least two or three restorative harm circles a week, whether they're just little tiny things that happen in the classroom or bigger events in the school that have really caused harm to the school at large and the community. So at this point, I just appreciate Dr. Fish and, and the staff at Pierce so much for just creating the time and space for this work at the school because it really is becoming an integral part of just how we operate as a school. It's been, it's been amazing. And as a parent, it does make me happy that this work is being prioritized too. So I can pause there.
You know, thank you. I know Chat Rosemary would be appropriate if there are questions for Adina before we move on.
Certainly. Any questions? Member White.
I just wanted to say that yesterday at Policy Subcommittee, we had a chance to speak with Adina and with Claire. I was so impressed and it was just so exciting to hear about the work that's going on and really, you know, it's just so, so necessary. And it's gonna, I think it's gonna make a huge impact in our schools and our children's lives and, and give the skill set that teachers need as well to deal with some of the issues that they, they deal with every day as a teacher. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fish.
Adina, thank you very much for being here tonight and for, for sharing with the committee all the good work that you, you've done and all the coaching that you've done with us and for me. Really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna transition the, the presentation to one of our other, to several of our other priority areas. And now we'll take a look at teaching and learning. So in the school improvement plans, priority area of teaching and learning, we have a goal to consistently facilitate rigorous, research-based and culturally responsive curriculum with exemplary instruction to meet the needs of every learner while promoting excellence and preparing students for success. Related to this goal, we have a theory of action that if we engage students in rigorous standards-based curriculum and invest in the professional learning of educators, then we support the learning and development of all students. The two aspects of our work related to this goal include our efforts in around our progress monitoring and achievement data as well as our work this year on universal design for learning, which is the foundation for personalized learning. So we'll walk through several data sets tonight. We'll briefly review Lexia Rapid and I Ready, both of which were previously presented to the committee back in September. So I, I, I won't, I won't rush through it at the same time. It won't be labor because I know that these are data with which you are familiar. And we'll also highlight some key takeaways from the data. So we'll begin with the Lexi Rapid data. So the table on the left shows the percentage of grade six, seven and eight students who were below grade level, on grade level and above grade level for reading comprehension during the 2021 and 2022 school year. We see here that the percentage of students on and above grade level was fairly steady throughout 21, 22, with the exception of grade eight. The approximately 10% of students in grade seven and approximately 20% of students in grade six and eight below grade level suggests some opportunities to continue to address unfinished learning. The table at the, on the right shows the progression over the past three school years of Lexia Rapid administration. And the percentages were fairly steady in grade six. We see a decline in the percentage of students below grade level in reading comprehension in grade seven, which is good. And there, but there's a trend in grade eight of an increase in the percentage of students below grade level throughout the year in grade eight, which raises some questions. Questions like, are the gaps in the curriculum, are there gaps in the curriculum that we need to, to address and remediate? Or are we simply seeing fatigue and testing by, by students by late spring of their, of their eighth grade year if they're sort of moving on? The, the table here shows disaggregated subgroup data for the overall change from the fall to the spring of last school year. So while the overall percentage was down 5%, several subgroups, including students who identify as African American or Black, students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx and students with IEPs, they all had growth, which was, which was a positive takeaway when we looked at the, the disaggregated, disaggregated subgroup data. So we just look at a few key takeaways from, from ELA, from, from Lexia Rapid. At least we noted that students started out the year with higher level of proficiency. However, students in subgroups experienced higher growth than average growth rate. Again, these data were, were shared as were the takeaways back in, back in September with the committee. We turn our attention to the I Ready screener data for math. Again, you've seen this, we saw this a few weeks ago. The table here shows the progression of students below at and on grade levels for math from the fall to the spring of the 2021, 2022 school year. And here we see that the percentage of students either early on grade level or mid on grade level or above grade level grew incrementally throughout the 2021, 2022 school year. However, screener data do show that there's a significant proportion of students who were below grade level in that. Here we see a comparison of the spring 21 data to the spring 22 data, so year-over-year comparison. And we, we see a small decline in the early on grade level or mid or above grade level on grade six. But we also see an increase in early on grade level or mid on grade level or above in seventh and eighth. When we look at the year-over-year. And then finally here, this table, we'll look at, this shows I Ready data that compares Pierce to the national, to national distributions. And here we see significantly more of our students early on grade level or mid on grade level or above than the national average. And we also see a significantly less number of our students who are three plus grades below the national average. We look at the disaggregated subgroup data. We see an overall increase in the percentage of students who were early on, mid or above grade level across the board. All subgroups demonstrated growth in students who identify as African American or Black, as well as students who identify as low income, demonstrated greater growth than the overall increase than the average. We look at some of these key takeaways from the I Ready screener. We saw that students were, the, the big one, the big takeaway is that students at all grade levels performed better on I Ready than the national results. You know, we do, we do wonder and speculate whether the testing fatigue in June after all the MCAS and all the screeners may have, you know, may have possibly negatively impacted student results in the spring administration, particularly in eighth grade. It's something that I know was shared both, I think by Veevo as well as Brian Seeluk, that, that the difference in how I Ready captures middle school learning. You know, in light of this, we'll continue to monitor this screener this year to evaluate whether I Ready is the most effective diagnostic tool for middle school math. I mean, already we're looking to, just with the amount of time and instructional time that's lost to, to administer in the screeners. I know we're looking at dropping the winter screener and just using the fall and the spring to, to measure, to measure growth over time, to look at growth over time. So last thing, typically this presentation would have a lot of robust MCAS data, but since Desi only recently released the MCAS scale scores, scaled scores for the 2022 spring test administration, we are limited on what we're able to present at this moment. However, now that we do have the full release of data, we are working to triangulate that data. And we'll perform further analyses to better understand where we are and where our new baseline is post the pandemic disruption. But when we kind of roll up all the data, at the end of the day, what we're really talking about in the conversations that are being had at the curriculum leadership level and in common planning time is, you know, how are we continuing to address unfinished learning? So if we look first at ELA, we just have to say and, and, and be real about the fact that we know that it'll take time to even out these deficits that were likely contributed to, to learn, for students to learn during a pandemic. However, what we, what we can feel confidence in, in feel, feel strengthened is that we do have strong curriculum as well as educators who have an increasing expertise with, with the newly implemented curriculum, the resources and the routines. Something else that we should feel strongly, you know, feel, feel positive about and feel encouraged about as it relates to addressing unfinished learning is that our recent work around de-leveling paired with our high-quality instructional materials really positions us well to meet the needs of all students in heterogeneous groups. And we know that these are two elements, we, two elements that we know from the research improve outcomes for all students. Further, using multiple data points from in ELA with Lexia Rapid as well as MCAS, once, once that those further analyses are done in, in our internal assessments that we're using, the, the use of these multiple data points, along with the use of instructional approaches that are tailored to the findings from the data analysis, are only going to help to personalize learning, to meet students where they are and to help to remediate any gaps in unfinished learning. Really cool example that Lauren Vandecourt shared with me, who is our KDA literacy director that she saw in action in, in seventh grade ELA class. Teachers using writing data from a beginning-of-year assessments in, in using that data to push students to create individualized writing goals for themselves, that they could, they could set goals and monitor their progress on, on the progress they're making toward achieving those goals. So there are, what I would want the committee in our community to understand is whether at ELA or math, which we'll address shortly, we know that, we know that it's going to take time to, to even out the deficits. We know that students have deficits. All kids do, right? This was an impact of, of several years of disruption. However, we have the expertise of educators, we have the resources, and we have the leadership through our curriculum leaders to lead us to better student outcomes based on what we, what we have. And that's something that I would, I would want, I want, we want people to feel confident in. Similarly, in math, like Amplify for ELA, we had the recently implemented decimals curriculum for math, which when we talk about UDL later, Brian Seeluk, our KDO 12 math director, will tell you that the decimals curriculum is, is created around the UDL, around UDL principles, right? So, and what we know about UDL is that it's the foundation for personalized learning. So we, we already have by way of curriculum, lots of tools and lots of things in the positive column to help us to continue to address unfinished learning. We know, again, in math, we know that many students have gaps. But what we care most about are those gaps that may impede accessing what they are learning, when they're learning it. If, if we're due, if a student is solving single variable equations, we're not too concerned in that moment if they have, if they're, if they experienced, if, if I already told us that they're having a hard time with parallelograms, right? Were we using the data related to what students are needing to access curriculum in that moment and doing, having those just-in-time interventions to remediate the gaps that, that may, that may exist? And a lot of this is happening through, again, the resources that we have through the curriculum is, is teachers having what they need to do this. So what we're seeing, teacher, happening in math is, is that they're building a roadmap of standards of what students will need when they need it so that they can, they can address any of those gaps or unfinished learning prior to introducing new concepts so that the, those interventions can be done in a targeted way. And finally, we, we know that we have, we've continued to make adjustments and improvements to our tier-two intervention. So we have our math investigations class, which is a, it's a regular tier-two intervention for students who are identified as, as having, through I Ready data, but also through historical MCAS data, where this is an additional math intervention that they're receiving during the school day. So again, we, we know that not just in Milton, not just at Pierce, but, but schools and school districts continue to address unfinished learning. But I would want the committee in our community to have a lot of confidence that we, we have the tools and resources to, to continue to meet students where they are and bring them to where they, to where they needed to meet grade level standards. So another component, while under our, the focus area of, of teaching, the priority area, rather, of teaching and learning, another component in our teaching and learning school improvement plan is our work around universal design for learning. And within this goal, we have a key action step to embed UDL principles and planning instructional and assessment practices to maximize more students, learning opportunities for all students. I'd like to spend some time now talking about UDL and more importantly, its connection to our school improvement plan priorities and some ongoing professional development. So, you know, what, what is UDL? Universal Design for Learning is a framework that is grounded in the belief that all students are capable of reaching grade level standards. It's a mindset and it's a skill set that provides options that students can choose to help them reach their goal. UDL is about firm goals and flexible means. So what that means is that teachers can set high expectations and standards for students' learning and for outcomes, but provide flexible options for students to meet those goals. And UDL has three principles and there is multiple means of engagement, multiple means of representation and multiple means of expression. And UDL has three principles and there is multiple means of engagement, multiple means of representation and multiple means of expression. So what we mean by multiple means of engagement is the teacher is promoting various ways for students to engage with material that are motivating to that student. What we mean by multiple means of representation is that content is presented in various ways to support different learning styles and different learning abilities. And what we mean by multiple means of expression is that students have options to demonstrate their mastery. So in addition to UDL being a logical entry point to support our work with the district strategic initiatives. These key principles also support our recent shift to de-leveling in ELA math in grade seven and eight in favor of heterogeneous student groupings. So. You know, why focus on UDL? We view universal design for learning as being an explicit connection to both our school improvement priority areas, but as well as the districts define strategic initiatives. And when we look at the intersection of personalized learning, safe and supportive schools and equity in learning. We view UDL's principles as a natural through line of of those three pillars of our strategic initiatives. So professional development. In in the spring, a little bit of background. So Pearson's instructional leadership team is in an incredibly talented group of people. I know you've met many of them from. When when it was Cattero, she was the KDA literacy director and Brian Seeluk and Chrissy Chappetta and Barbara Wright and AJ Melas and all with all with through the team. In the spring of last school year, our leadership team, Pearson's leadership team identified a goal. Of providing a common professional development experience for educators throughout the new school year, the school year. Regardless of content, having a common PD experience. For all educators and the team felt strongly that engaging all educators and professional development experiences. That were anchored in high quality instruction would provide a common focus and theme for professional development sessions for common planning time for department meeting time and for faculty meeting time. So since early in this school year, we've engaged in a partnership with Novak Educational Consulting. Which is an organization that is viewed as an expert in delivering UDL professional development to educators. Now, Novak facilitated our September late start professional day. And the feedback from teachers was that it was one, if not one of the best professional development experiences they'd ever had. So our goal as a school based leadership team is to remain engaged with Novak to support our own capacity to grow our own capacity to support teachers to continue to. To expand their practices around UDL. And I just want to say unrelated to UDL, the those late start professional days have absolutely been a gift. For educators to be able to have not just more time, but time to, you know, focus time for two hours in the morning as as a faculty. Is something that I I know is can sometimes be probably be an inconvenience for families, especially those with younger students. People should know that those are, they have, they are and have the potential to be high impact professional learning structures that. If they're benefiting educators. Teaching, then it's obviously naturally going to benefit students learning. So I just, I want to say that while having. While having a captive audience. So. As we sort of transition in wrapping up our presentation, the final aspect of our school improvement plan. That present tonight is around facility staffing and enrollment. And in this school improvement plans priority area of facility staffing and enrollment. We have a goal to ensure that Pierce has sufficient classroom in other in other space as well as appropriate staffing for its expanding enrollment. And that facilitates facilities rather provide adequate elements necessary for a strong twenty first century education. In relation to this goal, we have a theory of action that says if student enrollment continues to expand as projected. That Pierce will have to increase classroom spaces and staffing in proportion to its growth. The two aspects of our work related to meeting this goal include. Our our look at our experiences with repurposing spaces as well as negotiating growing enrollments. So you see for the for the over the past few years, we've repurposed multiple spaces to create classroom and office space. And most of these changes were highlighted in that project that was done by the school building committee last. Last winter, last spring to illustrate how spaces had been reclaimed around the district's building. So we have a few examples here of spaces that, you know, you could say were lost or you could say were gained. You know, the the what you see on the left is we previously had a maker space in our library. Which, you know, for all the reasons that we know maker spaces can enhance, you know, students learning from hands on to project based learning. We had, we had to repurpose that maker space to be a classroom. So now there's a there's a second classroom that is is in our library. Not unlike what you see when you walk through the library, cutting him a color card. In the middle there, we have our, we have two, we had two team areas. They were, they were built to be common flexible spaces in the middle of buildings that. Teachers could use to provide students with extra help that we use it for could be used for team meetings. We had to take one of those spaces two summers ago to convert to a classroom just to make sure we had enough classroom space. So you'll see before what the the two team areas where I you sort of identical footprint. The before show sort of this open space that can be used flexibly that's right in the middle of the of the building heading down the seventh grade hallway. And the after above is the same, what was the same space immediately above the the team area, which has been now converted to another classroom. And that that picture on the right is that was a closet. It was a closet off of our curriculum office, which is now an office that is used for. Our speech and language pathologist who also delivers services there. So. And in thinking about facilities, I know these these aren't new concepts, but it's important to continue to come back to them because of the issues are not going to. We know, we know that they're not going to. Resolve themselves. What I would like to emphasize honestly tonight even more than facilities is is enrollments and staffing. We look now at our turn our attention to some enrollment data. And I know the committee is familiar with these numbers, but they're important to illustrate because of the challenges around growing enrollments. They're not going to go away. And again, I mentioned it before, the reality of a new school building is likely years away. But we need to look closely and critically our enrollments and staffing to ensure that we're positioning ourselves. To meet the school based and district wide goals that we've set around students learning and development. And while overall enrollment tells a story of growth, the sizes of our classes need to create some urgency around advocating for personnel needs. So this table shows the number of classes with more than twenty five students. In the past four years, the two years with the highest enrollment have put significant pressure on class sizes and that would be. The twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the twenty two, twenty three school year, so the current school year. It's broken down. You see the overall enrollment, you see the number, when we say sections, we mean we mean classes, classes that are over twenty five students. On team, so those are your English, math, science, social studies classes, world language would be French. French, American, Spanish and Latin and then the export for classes. So. Two important notes here. The first is that this year. We have fourteen on team classes of twenty six or more students and nearly all of them are in the sixth grade. Again, probably not a surprise based on the enrollment in the current sixth grade. However, the concern is that the highest number of on team larger classes are in the grade where students are experiencing so many academic and social challenges transitions. It's during a transition year. The other important note, which is asterisks there. That comes from when we look at the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. So this was the year where within the district, we had the hybrid and remote choice options for students learning. In that year, in order to make both models run, we had to hire four point O FTEs. As one year appointments to ensure that we could, we could run our schedule. You'll notice that the enrollment in that year was nearly identical to what it is this year. Nine hundred fifty seven students that year, nine hundred fifty eight this year. But the number of classes this year with more than twenty five students in it is exponentially greater. So you see the impact of what four full FTEs can have on the number of sections that are over twenty five. So when we, as we move into the twenty three, twenty four budget planning process. Our site council and school community have several things that they need to consider. The first is looking at recently added staff. We did benefit from adding one point O Spanish teacher this year, but that was really. That position had to be added, otherwise we wouldn't, we would have had class sizes of forty and forty five and sixth grade Spanish. It was just, it was, it was an impossibility. We did add the one point O. Five oh four coordinator for grade six through twelve, which has been great because if you look at, so that person. That role is chairing all the five oh four, all five oh four meetings and cases, which has, which were previously done by the school counselors. So now having this role to take the five oh four coordination away from the school counselors. With the with the sizes of grades that they have is allowing, is freeing them up to do some more contemporary school counseling work where they're where they're pushing into classes where they're. Their help, they're they're developing, they're developing, they're supporting the the sixth grade seminar class. So we did see it again there. So when when we're able to add positions, we're able to to do a lot. Another consideration that we have to stay on top of is the the current size of the of the current fourth, fifth and sixth grade. Right? We know that these are three of, if not the three largest. Class sizes in the district. And thinking ahead to what that will look like when. The current fifth and sixth grade are six and seventh graders next year or two years down the line when all three of those grades are six, seventh and eighth grade appears. But as we, as we think about and. You know, in our site council, I've begun to have some of these preliminary conversations, but preliminary staffing considerations for next year and beyond. Really need to include a close look at adding team teachers, probably in grade six. But also explore to our teachers based on the number of sections that are over twenty five. And I I just want to come back to when when you compare that, the year where we added four point O staff, even though it's for one year. The impact on class sizes with adding four staff was significant. When you look at the number of classes that. Were there were under under twenty five. So as. Wrapping up here. Again, we really appreciate as a site council and as a school community to have the opportunity to present to the committee. You know, we have, we we have a lot of work that I think we should all be excited enthusiastic about that. And and focus areas that are that really. Are comprehensive and looking at the whole child from they're grounded in academic excellence, but but thinking about developing students as learners and as people. So as we move forward, the 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 continued opportunities for improvement is, is, you know, at the center of all this is maintaining a grounded focus on academic excellence for all of our students. And I, and I, I want to say that the three pillars of the three strategic initiatives in our new strategic plan of personalized learning that's safe and supportive schools and equity education. Are absolutely going to help us to maintain that grounded focus. But also to continue to evolve as as a school and as a district and that's that's exciting work. We've seen already just with by what happens when we provide that authentic target of professional development for educators, when we give staff what they need. We're going to, I imagine, you know, we'll continue to see to see gains, especially as we get back to being able to focus on. Teaching and learning without a lot of distractions that we've had to encounter over the past couple of years. And the last two in my mind go together, family and community engagement. I mean, there's a lot of in talking about. Hearing us advocate for for what we believe the needs are, but it's important that our families and community are are knowledgeable of that. But in addition to that, the family and community engagement, we had a great DEI meeting last night. And now that we're able to more easily bring people together, of being able to, you know, I know our DEI committee is going to focus on. Providing spaces and and opportunities to bring our families back into the building because so much of that had been taken away over the course of the past couple of years because. I think if if our our families and community know and understand just how much our students are getting from their learning, from their their school experiences. It'll make, it'll make it a lot easier to make the case for why we need to do this, the support that we'll need as a as a school and as a district.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fish, and and thank you to your whole team for. Sharing all that's going on at at Pierce Middle School. It's very exciting to hear and and. Really appreciate all that was shared tonight. Are there any other comments or questions from school committee members? Member Ross Denny.
So I want to start by saying it's exciting to hear the work of personalized learning coming off or getting started in. Community members that will have the opportunity to learn more about it during the school committee forum. It's just an excellent opportunity for people to just to get to learn about what it is and what it means for our students. I noticed that in the data that you shared. You talked about trying to, number one, we are well ahead of the national average. In terms of academic outcomes for the formative assessments that we're using. But I'm wondering. In terms of the tier two supports, specifically programs like math interventions. That have been around for several years. What have you noticed in the data in terms of impact? So when students who are typically two and three grade levels below engage in math interventions. Do you see more of them scoring proficiently, whether it's on the formative assessments or the MCAS? And if there's an analogous course for English Language Arts, I'd love to hear about that, too.
I I will tell you honestly, remember us and I don't have the data on in 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 front of me on the. I think we're talking about the impact of the math investigations class or the impact of the tier two interventions. I could tell you that that's something that. Brian Seeluk and I are both interested in in looking at, looking at that over the course of the past couple of years, especially because we've made some. Some adjustments that we thought we we believe, believe, we believed were were smart ones. But to be able to, now that the spring of twenty two MCAS data are available. I believe that that would be an opportunity to do some further analysis. And the analogous, just so you know, the the analogous are sort of the the companion. Tier two intervention on the ELA side is a reading support class. So, you know, we do have a reading, we have our reading lab class, which students who may have a specific learner disability in reading would take us as a special education. Service, but separate from that is is a reading support class, which is a general end tier two intervention that. I think we could probably do some similar analysis on it to look at impact of of the intervention.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carol.
Thank you so much. I just, I, two things, I really appreciated. How you explained universal design for learning. I'm not sure that I've heard anybody in a forum like this explain it quite that effectively before. In a way that connects the dots for members of the committee and the community to kind of understand why. It's, you know, you've chosen to. Focus on those principles of UDL. In relation to the strategic plan and the improvement plan that you had in place before. I think just. It's easy for those of us who live in the education space, who consume educational research. You know, to kind of take for granted that everyone knows. Something like UDL is based in the science of how people learn and including like cognitive neuroscience. You know, how. All all different individuals, whatever their abilities, strengths, needs, et cetera, you know, we all learn differently. And to support teachers with, as you were describing, an authentic PD. That, you know, allows them to implement on those principles in their teaching. I I share your confidence that, you know. A like robust commitment to implementation of this approach. Will show gains and and so I appreciated the way you explained that and kind of. Showed how it's connected into the pillars of the strategic plan. I also really appreciated your focus on class size. I think that we get caught up a lot. In describing and kind of planning around the the space needs and the issues that that we. kind of planning around the, the space needs and the issues that, that we feel acutely with our over enrollment in, in regards to space. And you also obviously showed really unfortunate consequences of that problem at Pierce right now. Um, but I think the class size issue is something that we really need to think about as a community. Um, I, I know that there are folks in the community, for example, who, you know, care about our rankings uh, relative to other communities, districts in, in Massachusetts. You know, class size is literally one of the metrics that is factored in. Um, and the lower your class size, like the, um, that reflects positively on your ranking. So by not addressing our increasing class sizes, we are, um, really putting ourselves at a disadvantage. Those of us, I'm speaking in the community, you know, to those of us who see, view rankings as like a valuable, um, way of measuring our, our success. Um, so I really encourage us to think as a community about the way that you presented that. I, again, I felt like with UDL was very clear and effective for us to consider the choices that we have before us. Um, you know, and in the, it's in this interim time before the school is going, the new school, you know, if we can come together as a community to make that happen the way we need to. Um, in the meantime, you know, it's unacceptable, um, to allow the class sizes to creep up the way that, that you're, and I think to talk about the impact of one full-time educator, you know, two, three, and up to four, as you said, that's really impactful. So I'd like to just say, I hope we can remember that, um, framing for our budget conversations when we're considering how we can, like, make things concrete for the community to understand the consequences of, of different choices, even though they're all hard choices, obviously, when we have such limited resources. Um, but, you know, thanks for the whole presentation. I think you've given us a lot to think about. I really celebrate the progress that you've been able to share. Um, I, I am excited for, you know, um, next year's presentation where we're able to hopefully, you know, see some of the, um, the positive outcomes of many of the things that you've presented here tonight and to, to just keep up the, the good work on these different fronts. Um, really appreciated the presentation. Thanks.
And Dr. Carol.
Dr. Miranda?
Uh, so, um, I'm not going to repeat a lot of, uh, I think what, um, member Denny and, uh, Dr. Carol just said. But I do, uh, want to thank you, um, Dr. Fish, uh, for the presentation tonight. I think it's very, uh, enlightening. There's a lot of positives in the presentation and, and I appreciate that, the hard work that's being done. I am, um, also a very pragmatic person, and I do think that, um, the community needs to hear it in terms of, I think you, you showed us what you've already done in the school building to transform spaces into classrooms. And wondered if you could speak to what other spaces, if any, are available to, um, transform into classrooms, given the fact that, uh, you have presented also a very compelling case for why adding additional F D E's instructors will make a difference in terms of class sizes, which, as we just heard Dr. Carol say, makes a difference in terms of how we rank overall in the Commonwealth. So I think we all want that, um, but just wondering if you could speak to the constraints you currently have and what is possible, um, in the near term to be able to address the increased staffing needs and, uh, this, in dealing, in addressing the size, um, that could be up in terms of size, uh, class sizes. Thank you.
Sure. So we have the summer where we did those enhancements that I showed you, the, the lot, the maker space, the, um, team area conversion. We also had, there was another one that I didn't show. We previously had a world language lab, that we converted to a classroom space. That was, that would have happened anyway because with the onboarding of all the devices with students, the need, the, the lab was obsolete, um, because every student had their own device in their backpack. I would say, other than possibly, um, we have a few larger classroom spaces that were, were, you know, again, weren't necessarily made to be classrooms, but they, they could possibly be parceled out into, you know, smaller spaces. We, there's not, there's not much room left to, uh, to subdivide and to, and to repurpose. However, and we think about adding staff, you know, one might ask, well, if you're asking, you know, you, you showed, well, what happened when you had four more staff, but you don't have any more building? We, we still can, you know, we have a culture here where most teachers have their own classrooms. And it, and it is a, it's, it's beneficial for staff from, for many reasons. But not every classroom is utilized every period of the day. Uh, and even now, we have several teachers who, who travel most of their day. I can think of three off the top of my head, uh, who have a home base, but not, not their own classroom. And while that may not be ideal, um, I guess what I would, the most direct way I can answer your question is if, if we were to add, say, tho- those, those four F D Es that I mentioned from two school years ago, we could absolutely have a, a play, classroom space to put, to put those teachers.
Thank you.
Member Vargis?
Hi, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was beautifully done and a lot of detail and work went into it, so I appreciate all the hard work and I echo the other committee members' sentiments, um, as well. Um, I just had one question, and it was just a follow-up from our September meeting. I know we looked at the reading comprehension data and a few of the subgroups had declined. It was minor decline. But I wanted to know, since September, has there been any, uh, progress made in terms of looking at that data and what we could do to kind of make sure that all, all the groups were increasing?
I'd say since September, uh, particularly if we, are you speaking specifically about the E L A, the Lexia Rapid Data? Yeah. Um, so since September, so students who would have been in the, in the, um, you know, who would have had, we would have had elevated concerns about, you know, not making the expected progress, that is where, um, for example, the reading support class would be as a tier-two intervention, that we would schedule students into that class during their day. And most students will have it have it every other day for the year. Uh, and that's a small, small group of reading instruction that focuses on reading comprehension, fluency. Now that the, also, you know, second layer of that back into tier one, now that the M-CAS data have been released and as we, you know, equip, you know, we go through as a leadership team and then equip educators with the, those data, I would expect that we would continue to, um, use what, use what we learn, use what we've used, what the data should tell us to make, you know, continued adjustments and enhancements, whether that be, um, whether there are students we may have missed who could use the tier-two reading support, or whether, I think for teachers using those data to think about how they do small group instruction or, you know, instructional parent groupings when they're, when they're in their classrooms. Um, I could tell you that, you know, this year I've taken on the role of, uh, being the sixth grade grade administrator. So I like, almost like being an assistant principal for the sixth grade and doing, I'm doing the team meetings, I'm doing the grade level meetings, and a lot of these conversations are what we're, are having at those team meetings where, whether it be the E L A teacher or the math teacher are noticing, um, trends, you know, they're noticing the connection between the I-Rate data or Lexia Rapid Data. And they're elevating those as, because they're advocating for more support for those students.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Fish, and, and to your whole team for coming tonight and sharing, uh, what's going on at, at Pierce Middle School. It was a wonderful presentation, wonderful to hear about some of the initiatives that are new and exciting, the, um, the community and connections that are being built through your grade-six seminars. Um, the alignment of your work with the strategic plan is, is, um, encouraging that, that we're on the right track and we're all working uh, in the same direction. Um, and, um, going first, you are our first, uh, site council presentation this year, and thank you for doing that. We, we bumped them up a little bit earlier this year, and we appreciate, um, all it took to, to get to where you are and all of the work that's gone into it and, and to get here on October twelfth and, and, um, to speak to us about it. We really appreciate that. Um, and, um, I, I, I think your story about, that you've told about the class sizes growing at Pierce are exactly, you know, what we've been seeing and, and talking about, uh, on school committee that our over enrollment, um, in, in all of our schools, um, is being seen, um, largely with the growth of class sizes, um, at the middle school and the high school, whereas in the elementary schools, we have carved up those buildings, um, to, you know, the nth degree with every effort to try to keep class sizes down. Um, and, you know, at the expense of compromising many spaces, libraries, um, you know, conference rooms, staff offices, you know, classrooms and, and, um, unusual places. Um, but, but the, the growth of class size, um, is, is, is a growing concern and it is something, it's, it is part of the story that that, again, speaks to our need for, um, new space and new staffing, um, to address the, the needs. So thank you for telling that story so well. It's, it's an important one for, for all of us to hear. Uh, so with that, I think we will move on and thank you so much for coming. Uh, very good. Uh, so Assistant Superintendent McKinney, um, would you like to address the, the last item under superintendent's update?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. The strategic metrics team has met twice over the last two weeks. They've been reviewing some of the data that was included in the presentation. Um, I think we're on track to present to the full committee. I believe it's on ten twenty-six. And we'll also be sharing, um, a sneak preview, if you will, to the, um, uh, curriculum subcommittee on ten twenty-one.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so next agenda item is we'll move on to citizen speak. Uh, we have, um, up to fifteen minutes set aside in this portion of the meeting. Um, we invite, um, members of the community, um, to come and, um, speak with us. Um, we have three minutes per person. And, um, if you are, um, with us tonight and would like to, um, speak, if you could raise your hand, and, um, you will be promoted to, uh, speak. We'll, um, have you, give you a chance to tell us what you're thinking. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, do you see any, any hands raised?
Uh, no, there's no hands raised.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all. Um, so I think with that, then we will, um, move on, uh, to our next agenda item, which is finance subcommittee report. And I'll turn it over to Member White.
Okay, um, we reviewed the, uh, Desi F Y twenty-two end-of-the-year financial report that Amy Dexter had prepared, and we have to vote on that this evening. It was sent out to you a while back, and it's pretty lengthy and detailed. I think when I talked to Amy about it in our finance subcommittee meeting, she said that the two areas that were different than last year, you know, that change was that special ed, special ed education expenses were up and utility bills were higher, um, than the year before. So does anyone have any questions about that? Report? Okay, could I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. We have two vendor warrants to approve tonight. Uh, vendor number, warrant number eleven, um, which was dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and vendor number thirteen, which was, it's dated, um, for October thirteenth. So vendor number eleven is in the amount of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents. And vendor number thirteen is in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. May I have a second on those vendor warrants?
Second.
Thank you. And, um, gonna do a roll call vote for those two warrants. Um, Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Member White, yes. Okay. And then the other, um, thing I wanted to report on is that the select board, has started their finance subcommittee meetings with the, uh, other, um, other departments and the schools. Uh, we went last week to have our first meeting. We did have a discussion about, um, the timing of the meetings, given people's work schedules and family commitments. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna do a variety of a combination of some, um, remote meetings that are gonna be at seven in the morning and some in-person meetings. So our next meeting is scheduled as a Zoom meeting, and it's this Friday morning at seven A M. So that's when we'll be meeting again. Um, and they're gonna be starting to think about and plan for, um, the next year's budget. Um, one thing that was, uh, noted was that from the budget that the town meeting approved, um, last year during town meeting, there's been a, there was an increase, um, from the state for Milton of another three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Is that correct, Amy?
It's close to three eighty-eight, I believe.
Three eighty-eight, thank you. And, um, so of course, I got all excited thinking that that would be a good thing for our needs, but one of the things that the town administrator talked to us about is that the, um, contract Milton's, the town of Milton's contract for gas is, uh, has to be renewed currently, and that the prices have doubled since the last contract. So I think there's gonna be some discussion on Friday about whether we put that money aside for increased utility costs, which are gonna impact both, you know, the entire town, including the schools. So the next meeting, we'll be talking about that, and we'll, I'll keep you posted. But that's pretty much the end of the finance report. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Member White. Um, so we go on to the policy subcommittee. Dr. Carol?
Sure. Um, we can begin by, um, taking up the second readings of the policies that we have listed out, and then I can provide just a very brief report, um, on our meeting that we had yesterday. So the list of policies, um, let's see, eight policies, um, on our agenda are, just to remind the community, um, these policies are being updated in accordance with recommendations we received from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which supports school committees in districts all over Massachusetts to stay aligned with updated state statute and, um, federal guidelines. So that is sort of the source for the updates that we are making to that is sort of the source for the updates that we are making to these policies. Are there any questions from any committee members? We did a first reading of these policies last time and now we are doing the second reading. Any comments or questions from anybody?
I have one comment or question. Dr. Carol is on the policy J I C, Student Discipline. So we'll, we'll be approving this tonight, but then we'll be bringing this back again with additional changes after the work you
Yes. Yes, I was planning to kind of explain that out in the report, but yes, the what we're doing here is simply approving the recommendations for updates that keep us in compliance with state law. And we will sort of be discussing more substantive updates to the J I C Student Discipline Policy over the coming weeks. So yeah, I thought it would maybe be simpler if we just sort of do the second reading of these policies and then I can provide a report based on our conversation yesterday that Member White already kind of alluded to. And then we can maybe see what questions we may have about that process, but that won't really be on our agenda until November. Again.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So I think that we have to, so any other comments or questions about these updates? Okay, I think I think we have to go one by one and take a roll call vote on each of these. So I, let's, we'll just try to be efficient with this process and I know it will be a little bit tedious. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy A C, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. Is there a second? Thank you. So roll call vote, Member Vargis?
Sorry, yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion to approve the second reading of policy A C R, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy G B, equal employment opportunity. Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy G C F, professional staff hiring.
Second.
Thank you. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, halfway. Making a motion to approve the second reading of policy J B, equal educational opportunities.
Second.
Thank you. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. I will make a motion to approve the second reading of policy J F B B, school choice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
And member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. I will make a motion to approve the second reading of policy J I C, Student Discipline. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And last but not least, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy J I C A, Student Dress. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes on that. Thank you for your patience. Finally, to conclude a policy report. So as Member White mentioned, the policy subcommittee did meet yesterday with the Dr. McKinney. Thank you, Dr. McKinney for that. And as Member White mentioned, we were joined by Claire Galloway Jones, Susan Micali and Adina Schechter, who provided really helpful insights into the ways that this policy of J I C Student Discipline intersects with the work that they do to support students in special education as well as, you know, generally speaking, as we heard Adina speak to Pierce, her work around restorative practice. And as, as we know, we're fortunate to have Director Galloway Jones here, providing guidance and expertise around DEI. And so what I wanted to just share from that meeting was that the policy subcommittee has begun the conversation, or I will say recommenced the conversation that actually began last school year around how we can update more substantially the student discipline policy so that it's aligned with our current practices as a district. The policy was last updated in 2004, so it is definitely in need of, of an update to make sure that the policy is accurate in terms of, you know, how the district is approaching student discipline practices. And, you know, this is in the context of not only Milton, but sort of school districts in general and how practices has, have evolved over time. So the, the work you heard referenced in the Pierce Site Council to address the disproportionality that Milton has been cited for by DESI. That was part of our conversation yesterday. And, you know, Dr. Fish was speaking to that in the presentation this evening. So I feel really optimistic about how we so far are working kind of together as a subcommittee with the leadership team to be informed by their expertise and their practices to ensure that our policies are supporting the, the priorities and practices that are in place. Just for this school committee to know kind of where we're going next with this. So at, I know we'll talk about our next agenda, but the policy subcommittee will not meet again until November 15th. That's our next meeting. And at that time, we expect to have a redlined version of the policy that kind of delves into these more substantial changes, which have all been discussed at this point in time. It's now a matter of kind of translating the conversation into particular proposed revisions that go beyond the technical updates we just approved, you know, per state law to, again, just like make sure that our policy is relevant to the, the needs and the work that our leadership and teachers are doing in Milton. So my hope would be that we are able to bring optimistically a first reading of an updated, again, J I C Student Discipline Policy to the November 16th meeting. That would be sort of assuming that our policy subcommittee reaches agreement on revisions that will be proposed at the November policy meeting. But you know, we also know that this isn't, you know, at this point, we're not rushing this process. We're being thoughtful because we know that this is really important to get right. But I think we also have a good process underway where we're able to incorporate the perspectives of folks who are going to be in the position of implementing this policy and who are saying that they need, they need more support from a more a, a policy that more accurately reflects the stated needs, like priorities of the district. So that's, that's kind of the update. Does anyone have any questions about that? Otherwise, we will just pick it back up a few meetings from now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Carol. And last thing on our agenda is next meeting agenda items. So we know that the metrics advisory team will be coming at our next meeting and we also plan to have the Collicott Site Council attending our next meeting. I also have on here capital requests and I don't know if we're gonna be ready for that or not, but we'll have to and we may need to put that off for another meeting. I, I don't know. Assistant Superintendent Dexter, do you know where we are in that process or, or Member White? In terms of capital requests?
I believe they should be ready by then. The town administrator has requested that they be in November 1st with the deadline given. So I would think we would have them to finance fairly soon.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Very good. So we'll have that on the October 26th agenda then. Very good. So if there's nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Thank you. Take a roll call vote. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Have a good night.
Night. Bye bye.